I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, September 28, 2022 to order. I think we're all aware of a pretty significant weather event in Florida, praying for all those folks down there, so we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Alderman Gripp, if you'd lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Mr. Krupp, our deputy city clerk, please call the role for tonight.
Dunn?
Present.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ted?
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, welcome, everybody. Good evening, as we begin the meeting of the city council. Like to again welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place for everybody, especially for folks. And here's a reminder, if you would please put it on silent, your cellphone, or turn it off simply because it gets in the way if someone's talking. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium right there. The microphone's above you. We'd love you to give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. All right. Will, Alderman, please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for September 14, 2022. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. City Administrator Ms. Spiegel, anything for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Will, Alderman, move approval of the report on the committee of the whole for September 21, 2022?
Move the report.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have three proclamations this evening: National Good Neighbor Day, Fire Prevention Week, and Hispanic Heritage Month. National Good Neighbor Day will be read by Alderman Cornet. Alderman Cornet, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas National Good Neighbor Day was created in 1971 by Becky Mattson, a community businesswoman in Lakeside, Montana, to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of a good neighbor who collaborates and partners with their community to create a better place for all. And whereas in 1978, the first presidential proclamation recognizing National Good Neighbor Day was issued by President Jimmy Carter and urged people to build friendships and have concern for others and create bonds that form strong neighborhoods and communities. And whereas, the Good Neighbor Project is designed to fit the individual needs of our community and bring Davenport neighborhoods together. And whereas, with 94 neighborhoods participating in the Good Neighbor Project, the city of Davenport assists in enhancing communication and collaboration with citizens through partnerships with staff and the Davenport Police Department. And whereas, the city of Davenport commends good neighbors who take pride in their property, socialize with those who live around them, and dedicate their time and talents to make their neighbors a safe and stable and welcoming place to live. And whereas, while it is a blessing to have a good neighbor, it is even a greater blessing to be a good neighbor. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim September 28, 2022 as National Good Neighbor Day in Davenport and encourage all citizens to acquaint themselves with their neighbors and be friendly and sociable and exhibit kindness to all. I move this proclamation to be approved.
Second.
Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This proclamation will be accepted by Tammy Trice, the Good Neighbor Project Neighborhood Fund leader. Meet me there. [laughter]
It took me a long time to decide whether or not I was the right person to lead the project. I'm the Good Neighborhood Project leader on Hetherton, but I had to ask myself, why not me? And it was the best decision that I've made. I have met a lot of really good friends and neighbors. We've all come together and we've made Hetherton a place for everybody would want to be in, play in, and live safe. And I just want to thank Sergeant Andrews and Ally and all the hard work that they've done, but this is really, really something special to my heart, and I wouldn't have been able to do this without all of your support, Alderman, Dickman, and all of our neighbors. It's just been a fun project for me to lead, and I just thank everyone for that.
The next one is Fire Prevention Week, and Alderman Jobchin will lead that. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the city of Davenport is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Davenport. And whereas, Fire Prevention Week is celebrated annually during the week in which October 9th falls and is the longest-running public health and safety observance on record, celebrating its 100th year this October. And whereas, with a theme of "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," the 2022 Fire Prevention Week campaign reinforces the critical importance of developing a home escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it regularly. And whereas, the Davenport Fire Department is dedicating the month of October to community outreach and encourages residents to have working smoke alarms and to create and practice a home escape plan twice a year, once during the day and once at night, using different ways out. And whereas, residents and visitors are urged to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by leaving the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Davenport Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week in Davenport and encourage all citizens of our community to join with millions of Americans in helping to support the efforts and awareness of fire safety and prevention. The city of Davenport Skybridge will display the color red from October 10th through 12th and 14th through 16th in recognition of Fire Prevention Week dated this 28th day of September 22. I move the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The proclamation passes, and here to receive the proclamation is Chief Carleton and Sparky.
Well, Mr. Mayor and council, the Fire Department truly appreciates this. Fire prevention and fire education are truly our mission within the Davenport Fire Department, and this is what the men and women of the Davenport Fire Department do every day. I do have to say a special thank you to Lieutenant Zach Solis. He is in charge of Republic Education Office, and he does a lot to coordinate all of our efforts to make sure our community's safe. If anyone out there does not have a working smoke detector, please contact the Fire Department, and if they qualify, we'll make sure we get one in their house or find a way to get it no matter what. So, thank you very much.
The next one is Hispanic Heritage Month, and that will be read by Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Ortiz, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's an honor to read this one as a proud Hispanic. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor and celebrate the many ways that Hispanic Americans contribute to the success of our country, and the Hispanic population in Davenport is strong and vibrant and a key part of the fabric of our city, providing a positive and profound influence on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. And whereas, during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Davenport recognizes the contributions made by and the importance of the presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States. And whereas, during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the city of Davenport reaffirms that diversity is one of our country's greatest strengths, excuse me, and also acknowledges the Hispanic leaders who have stayed in the struggle for equal justice to ensure that everyone in this nation can contribute their talents and have the opportunity to thrive. And whereas, as Hispanics continue to enrich our community's character and shape our common future, they strengthen America's promise and affirm the narrative of American unity and progress. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Davenport and encourage all citizens to take this opportunity to celebrate the contributions that have been and continue to be made by Hispanic Americans dated this 28th day of September 2022. Do I have a motion?
So move.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This proclamation carries. I'd like to meet Sergio Mendoza and Jesse Noriega from the Greater Quad Cities Hispanic Chamber of Congress Board Members.
So I'd just like to thank the Davenport City Council for this proclamation. Davenport is a great place to live and do business, so we are very grateful of that. And part of Hispanic Heritage Month is to celebrate together, so we invite you all to celebrate at our next big community event, which is the Day of the Dead Parade on October 22nd in downtown Moline. Thanks again.
So, thank you, everyone. Next is petitions, communications. I have a couple. I just wanted to let everybody know and thank a lot of folks. I had the opportunity with my colleagues, Mayor Tomes from Rock Island, Mayor Raya Putty from Moline, our police chief, Bledel from Davenport, police chief from Rock Island, Landy, and Sarah Ott. We had the opportunity to travel to DC the last few days, and with the theme of looking at us as a region when we talk about addressing violent gun crimes in the Quad Cities. So, we were able to go to the White House and talk with the Intergovernmental Director for Intergovernmental Affairs. They loved the discussion of GVI and what we're doing and are offering their assistance. We went to Department of Justice and talked to them about many programs and the things they can do and we can apply for. Wonderful conversations. Went to the US Capitol, had direct face-to-face conversations with Senator Durbin, Senator Duck, with Senator Grassley, and Senator Ernst as a bipartisan, two-state, region effort to enhance and address gun violence. So, it was awesome, and I want to thank especially the folks that went, but to people, because nothing gets done around here, especially behind the scenes and the coordination and organization efforts that make things happen. From a personal thanks from me to Tiffany Thordike, who helped get me scored away and arranged, and then a person that arranged, coordinated, worked out schedules, took us around, made sure we had to get to where we are because our schedule was pretty intense. A special thanks to our Chief Strategy Officer Sarah Ott for organizing and continuing the conversations. It was wonderful noting the efforts by both and all the senators, especially understanding the importance of this and wanting, quite frankly, to take this on. So, thanks to everybody that was a part of it. Thanks to everybody that was wanting to assist, and we'll continue to work. As we always say, we continue to work on these things, and we will. The other thing, thank you to Mr. Dyson and your group. Another great accreditation by the Parks Department. Davenport leads the state in departments with national accreditation, and here we go again. Every other month, I think we talk about somebody getting accredited, and great job to them. So, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. Kind of all things, Davenport Library tonight for me, but you're welcome to join me working with the Davenport Library and the city's Historic Preservation Commission. Tomorrow night, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., I'll be hosting a seminar online and in-person funding historic property projects and talking about the intricacies of the historic tax credit project. And this is particularly focused on residential properties, but we can talk about both. In any case, it's tomorrow night at the main branch of the library from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and it's Auditorium B, which is in the basement. It's the larger building there. You can go online to register. There's information on the library's website as to, you know, how to log on, so you can do it in-person or you can do it online. So, I look forward to meeting with you then. And so there's that. And then, another thing that's happening at Main, you know, libraries, as I said before, are many things to, it's not just checking out books, it's information, it's referral, it's community engagement, and it's maker spaces. And on Friday, September 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., there is a special opening of Studio 321, which is the new maker space at the main branch. It's a chance to tour the new facility, the renovated space, it's on the first floor, have some light refreshments and sort of learn about what's going on. This was part of the renovation process that the library went through, and so they're very proud to kick this off. So, if you can come, again, that's Friday night, September 30th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the Quad City Marathon planners because they worked with the Waste Commission of Scott County, and they had recycling set up right next to the trash, and people were doing it right. And they had lots of recycling containers, which are the blue, you've seen them, that there's like a cross legs, and there's blue on the top, and there's holes in the top, so it's clear that it's for cups and plastic bottles and that kind of thing. And setting it up that way means people will actually use it as opposed to, they won't take the time to look for them. So having them right next to the trash really works. So I just wanted to give a shout-out for the Quad City Marathon, working with the Waste Commission of Scott County to get recycling. And I look forward to when we get recycling for all city events, and we work with the Waste Commission of Scott County to make sure that all our city events do it the same way that the Quad City Marathon did. I walked the marathon. No, I didn't. I lied. I walked the 5K. I did not do the marathon. Came in smack dab in the middle, but that was okay. So anyway, it was fun, and a gorgeous day for it, and apparently some records were set, and that's really cool. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. We have a couple. The first one is a third consideration for an ordinance amended Chapter 10.96 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled Schedules, by making various changes to Sections 2, 5, and 14 to implement a change in traffic flow for Third and Fourth Streets between River Drive and Marquette Street. Is there any public with comment? Okay, so I'll ask so I know. As someone's talking, if someone else wants to talk, if you could position yourself by the polls, so I'll know there's another one. Again, reminder, and I don't, Dale, you know the rules, but I'll just remind for everybody, we'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, where you're from, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore. I live in the 6th Ward, and I approve this message. The United States Marine Corps has a pledge, and it states, "I will not lie, cheat, or steal, nor tolerate those who do." I think that's a great motto for everybody to have their entire life, and I hope you all agree. A few weeks ago, I would have bet tonight's vote would have been 5-5 with the mayor breaking the tie, giving the vote the required six votes for passage. After reading the paper a couple of weeks ago, I read that one alderman was quoted as saying they would not support the ordinance change unless the conversion went to Division Street. I attended said alderman's ward meeting and heard said alderman state that this conversion would not affect the residents of their ward. Okay, it will, but I'll let that one go as a little white lie. In my opinion, it's still a lie. A little later in the meeting, said alderman stated that if it ends at Marquette, I will vote no. So assuming said alderman holds true to their promise, I fully expect-
Dale, I'm going to remind you, let's talk to the group as a whole, not, I know you're not mentioning names, but we're focusing on one thing, so let's address the group.
Okay.
Thank you.
It will be interesting to me to see how this person votes. Again, I will not lie, cheat, or steal, nor will I tolerate those who do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And White Homes, I've been here one or the other time. I've been a member of the city of Davenport for 64 years. I'm going to go repeat some of the things I didn't like about it before and add a few more to it. The slow traffic, you're just going to create road rage, pollution, more lung problems. People like me, you're not taking into consideration, not at all. Trucks and semis, we're going to have parking problems downtown. I don't know what you're going to do about that. Many, many chances for head-on collisions that we don't have today. Head-on is not good. I cleaned up a lot of messes through the years, and head-ons were not the best ones to have. And with the current shooting problems we've got going, get everybody tied down on the spot, shooting breaks out, people don't have a chance to get away. We just let them sit there. Accidents will tie up traffic. We're going to tie it up for a long time. Police and first responders are going to be very restricted in getting to the areas. Yes, they'll get there. Pony Express did too. But we're restricting times that people could use to help, like my wife did last January when she almost died. Couple more seconds would have made a big difference. Flood times, kind of getting redundant, it's going to be a mess. The businesses that are pushing for this, we ought to have a list of them so we know which ones we do not want to do business with. Most of the business supporting this will likely be gone in five to 10 years. They'll be here for a little while, and then they'll be gone. Same as the people living in the apartments is what I call nomads. They'll be here for a few years, and they'll be gone, and we're going to change everything to fit these people's selfish needs. I've been paying taxes for 60 years in this town, well, probably 55. Started paying at a young age. I think us, who have been here for standing, all have some consideration on this. And anybody on the council should have disclosed that they have any business with anybody that they're voting on this for. Should be transparent, should be openly open. And the businesses, if they want more business advertised, don't use people driving down the road as distracted driving, again, creating more problems. In conclusion, it's going to be a mess. Why don't you take the money you want to spend on that and offset our cost for garbage taxes that keep going up every year, so we don't have to pay for something every paid for once? You're going to have a lot of smoke, carbon footprint problems, and obviously, I don't think many people care about that, but they need to. Last is, in a meeting at Roosevelt Center, the city attorney was there, very nice person, and he said that the city, nor anybody on the board, cannot be held accountable for if there's accidents later and people die because can't get there in response. He said, "It's a moral issue, not a legal issue." So if it's a moral issue, I think you need to take that to heart, because that's where you need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ron Swedner, Davenport, Rock Island, and Toma. I've come many times for this council to say no. We have a partnership downtown whose metrics for success is to increase the number of people living and working and engaging. And number two is the increased downtown commercial values. Okay? I can understand that. But let's say, for this story, we have a member of a council, that member has property in the area they're voting on. He supplies money to a partnership that is pushing and offering money to the city. To me, that would be a conflict of interest. Is that happening now? I can't say. Yes? I can't say no. We have a government that's supposed to be transparent and open. If you push for an agenda to where you make money, that's a conflict of interest by my standards. But we have several thousand people that don't want this. You have less than 6% of the population downtown. We're going to spend millions. What about the rest of Davenport? When are we going to be taken care of? We've spent millions on the ballpark for River Renaissance, Lights River Action, other projects. You know, we just put a million dollars in air-conditioning the state. What about the rest of the folks? When are they going to get their money's worth? Why are we catering to a small percentage? It shouldn't be happening. You are elected for certain areas. We have two aldermen at large, which represents everybody. How about voting no and giving the citizens a chance to have better roads and other things instead of trying to cater to someone that owns property and is going to gain more money in the long run? Because that's their goal, and that's what Davenport Partnership, and that's supplied by the special tax district. They pay money to them. They pay money for them to be their voice. Why? To make a better Davenport. I understand that. But if we have someone that is paying and voting, that's wrong. And I think this vote all along should have never happened, but I'm urging, right now, vote this down, vote it no. The people don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kyle Carter, 5th Ward and Executive Director for the Downtown Davenport Partnership. I still remember when there were questions about building River Renaissance. It's too expensive. Fix my roads. Why do we do things we don't have to do? Well, we invested $113 million in that, and it ended up catalyzing the next 20 years of our investment in downtown and in this community. It's one of many, many examples that I've seen over and over again where this community has said, "We can't do that. We're not good enough for that. We're not, we don't need that." And every time we've made those investments and taken that risk to do what we knew was the best for our long-term interest, it's worked out in the favor for our citizen's dream, for our tax base, and for our quality of life here. This is another great example of just having the courage to get done what we intended to. I'm not a fan of building plans that we have no intention to make. Why do we build master plans if we have no intention to create them? I'm not interested in doing that, and for the last, frankly, 17 years of my career, I was put on this planet, as far as I could tell, to make sure we get those kind of things done. I've taken great pride in it, the Davenport- The Downtown Partnership has taken great pride in this work. And frankly, but for the city of Davenport, hiring Jeff Speck in 2008, I don't know that it would ever come to our attention just how powerful this idea is of traffic calming, putting pedestrians above cars, making sure that the investments that we make are not just about how fast we get somewhere, but the quality of life that surrounds the streets that we publicly own together, because it is shared space for all of us. And, you know, this has often been framed as the business community wants this. The city of Davenport invested in these plans themselves for the last decade and a half. We have just been its biggest advocate. We may have been the first to come up and say this was an idea to consider twenty-two years ago, but it was seventeen years ago that this body came forward and said, "We think it's a good idea, too." It was just a couple of years later that this body invested in the 2010 Davenport Emotion Plan, which again reiterated the power of this idea, its value to the community, and why it's worth investing in. In 2017, the Downtown Partnership invested, again, in another study that reinforced this, and again and again, eight times in the last twenty-two years this has happened. I just got back from the International Downtown Association Conference in Vancouver, where we talked about complete streets and best practices, where traffic calming, two-way streets, and pedestrian focus was reiterated as a global best practice. We, again, are more of an outlier than a leader in this case in how we have made our streets today. But I've been trying to think about ways to make this make sense to folks who don't, who still don't totally understand it. But the way that we have these roads configured today is the equivalent of a really great McDonald's cheeseburger. It's fast, it's familiar, and it's really easy. Continuing to eat that for the rest of your life has consequences. And public traffic engineers, urban planners, and folks like Jeff Speck are the doctors in this scenario that come and talk to us every few years and say, "For the betterment of your health, you should reconsider a road diet." And for years, we've ignored that advice. And people have asked me, and over and over again, "Why do you hang on to this like a terrier on my leg?" Again, we don't make plans to not build them, and we've had doctor after doctor tell us, "You could be healthier." It's not that the cheeseburger won't fill you up, and it definitely gets you where you need to go, but there are healthier ways to build community, and healthier ways to arrive where we need to go. And what we have before us today, finally, after two decades of conversation, and if I ever hear again that there hasn't been enough public input on this, I'm gonna scream. There has never been any topic more publicly discussed than this on any level in my time at Davenport. All I'm asking is that we consider the healthier choice. And we have a healthier choice in front of us to pick from, and I think we should choose it. Doesn't mean that it won't require some additional work, doesn't mean that we might not have to tinker with it and make sure that every little piece of it fits right by the time that we're done. But just like River Renaissance, when they said we could never build the Figgy, and we did, when they said we could never build the River Meats Experience, you'll never get fifty percent. No one will ever vote for that. We did it, and it worked. This is another one of those things that we just need to do it, and I'm confident it will work. Not without trouble, not without changes, and not without forethought into how and when, and being careful to make sure that we're delicate about how we execute, but we just need to do it. At the end of the day, there's a lot of other issues downtown. Homelessness, we have a mental health crisis in this community, substance abuse has skyrocketed. I have alleys that need work and many other things that need attention. So I'd like to get back to that work-
Please finish, sir.
-and put this one behind us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Gata, Sixth Ward. We talked, I talked about that if you change it to two ways, there's gonna be more chances of people getting hurt crossing the street and stuff, because they have to look both ways. And somebody else made the comment afterwards that you still have to look both ways now, because you might have somebody coming down the street the wrong way. That's true. But I also made a comment that, I believe it was on Second Street, there was somebody that ran into the back end of somebody, they were traveling at a highway rate of speed, and I think somebody could even have been killed, and I don't know if anybody else remembers that or not. Okay. I see a couple of heads, yes. That's a two ways, that's a two-way street. People do make errors, people do make bad judgments, and there will continue to be accidents, whether it's one-way or two-way. So it, you know, so that shoots that. Coming down here tonight, I come up Third Street, and there was a gentleman with a box, and he jaywalked. He looked to the right. I did not see him look to the left, because, you know, he didn't have any traffic coming that way. People will still continue to jaywalk, whether it's one-way or two-way. People will still get hit. I went a little bit farther, and at the corner of Harrison and Third Street, there was a semi parked in the right lane, blocking the right lane. I heard comments that people, they can be forced to use the alleys to unload. There could be an ordinance possibly passed to make them park in the alleys and not park on the streets. I don't know whether that'll come about or not. I don't know how this is gonna affect it. You go to two ways. I think it's only three lanes there. If, you know, if there's a semi blocking one, there may still be two lanes open. You know, I'm not sure how you're gonna do this, because I've not looked at the plans. I, you know, I'm guilty of that. I heard a comment that there's drag racing downtown, and it was implied, I guess, maybe that that's gonna take care of the drag racing. Up on the streets between Eastern and Jersey Ridge, you put bumps, speed bumps, to slow down the traffic or to deter traffic from going through there. I know I don't go through there anymore, so because of it, I use Elm. So now, you moved traffic down to Elm Street. Are we gonna have to start putting speed bumps there to do that? If the two ways don't take care of it, are we gonna put speed bumps downtown to slow them down? If you have a third, uh, see here. If you change this to two ways, there's a business on Fourth Street that has expressed concern about this, and I've talked to them, and they had a petition, you know, that was available for people to sign. If you change this to two ways, right now, I'm gonna say people from the West End wouldn't normally use Third Street and come into town or go to Bettendorf or wherever. They would go back down Fourth Street on the way back. There'd be a good chance that that business is gonna get business from the people going by, because they have to go by, or they prefer to use Fourth Street as their main travel. If you change it to two ways, and you move the traffic down to, if people prefer to come down Third Street to and from, there's a chance that that business on Fourth Street is gonna suffer, because it lost the traffic that would normally go by. I also mentioned earlier that there's, I wanna bring it up again, that I believe it's considered a low bridge on Fourth Street, Railroad Bridge. It's only thing thirteen-two. Most semis, I think, need thirteen-six. I know down on the highway, there's a, the government bridge is, I think, thirteen-eleven, which says something about low bridge. So are we gonna have a problem with semis, you know, on Third Street? When you've, or when the city, I shouldn't say you, because they're maybe not, when the city put the dividers down on River Drive, I came down to a meeting and expressed interest and concerns that it was going to take away our turning lanes. I was told that nobody turns at Main Street. That's why there's no, there's no left-hand turning lane up Main off of River Drive. Am I, am I right or correct? Or wrong? But anyway. Anyway, I just wanna say-
Please finish, sir.
Okay. I have seen people turn left there now, without the turning lane. So they are stopped in the traffic, because we did a layaway with that turning lane. So to me, that created a safety issue. Thank you for your time. If we had more money, I'd say go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Terry Bush. I live on Thornwood Avenue in Davenport on the Third Ward. I'd like to ask you guys to vote this down. I think this is a huge mistake. There's a reason why they went to one ways years ago, and that reason's still there. We go back to two ways, we're gonna have traffic congestion, and talk about River Drive and Fourth Street, River Drive and Third Street, you got a traffic light at River Drive and Third. You're gonna have to change that, and you're gonna have to put a traffic light at River Drive and Fourth, and you're gonna have to change the turning radiuses, 'cause those are, the River Drive runs on an odd angle. But anyway, I looked on Fourth Street when I came here tonight, there's five lanes there. Two of them are parking lanes. So if you go to one way and you have parking on there, you're gonna have one lane each way and the center lane for turn, I assume. So to me, the only way you can make this work and have a decent traffic flow is to take the parking off of Third and Fourth Street, no parking. So the businesses that want this, do they got parking lots for their business? I doubt it. Not very many of them, they park on the street. So anyway, I think this is a really bad idea. I would like to have seen this put up to a vote, to the voters, you know, at election time, let the people vote, not the business community vote carry the day. But, and the gentleman that talked about the Figgy, that's kind of my pet peeve. Just ask yourself in this council, how many millions of dollars have you guys give to the Figgy to keep it open? So, another bad idea. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Long speech ready, but we're gonna scrap that, 'cause I don't think anybody wants to hear it. But I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for your hard work. I've been on the other side of the table, and I know it's a, it's a pain. I mean, you're listening to people all the time, back and forth. You have done a wonderful job of improving Davenport. You've, we've got more jobs coming in, we got more companies coming in, we got more apartments going up, we got condos going up, we got the Call Building being renovated. All the neighborhoods are benefiting. And I want the downtown to benefit, too, and I want the downtown to prosper. I don't believe it's my making them one ways. And I'd like to go for a couple of examples. I had heard before that you were looking at Cedar Rapids, and Muscatine, and Peoria. Maybe they're gonna change, maybe they aren't, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. And I'm sure that if they supported it, the people that voted for it will think it's working out just wonderfully. Go a little bit beyond that. What I'm familiar with is Springfield, Illinois, and Chicago. I worked in Chicag, in Springfield for many years. There are two main one-way streets going right through downtown, right past the old Capitol, right past the Lincoln Memorial, or Lincoln Museum, Lincoln Library. Businesses are downtown are flourishing, and Fifth and Sixth Streets are one-way, go straight on through from downtown, from the south end to the north end. East and west, there's one ways, it's Jefferson and Clear Lake. They're, they're used all the time, and, and they work. Now, while I was going to college, I went to college in Chicago, and then I went to law school down in Champaign. And during about three years there, I drove cab, yellow cab. It's great. In downtown Chicago, it was wonderful. So I, I got familiar with the streets downtown. Now, I'm gonna list a few streets here. Dearborn Street, Clark Street, South Michigan, South Indiana, Kenmore, Canal Street, Displanes, South Jefferson, Solidarity Drive, North Rush, North Wells, North Clinton, North Jefferson. Those are one-way streets in Chicago going north and south. The next page, one-way streets. Walton, Delaware, Chestnut, Pearson, Superior, Huron, Ontario, Ohio, Lake Street, Randolph Street, Washington Street, Madison Street, Monroe Street, Adams Street, Jackson Street, Thirteenth and Fourteenth Street. Those are one-way streets going east and west. The city is covered with one-way streets. They've been around a little longer than we have, and they're not changing to two-way streets. Why? Because the traffic flows smoothly. Now, I don't know how many of you are familiar with downtown Chicago, but there are, there are no empty buildings. They're building high-rises. They've got movie theaters, they got opera houses, they got symphonies, they got museums, they got parks. Everything's going smoothly and flowing, and they have the one-way streets. I think downtown Davenport can prosper, and prosper well with one-way streets. Just because I drive through downtown once in a while, doesn't mean I can't go into downtown and then go to Boozy's, or anyplace else in downtown. And I've heard the comment from one alderman, "It doesn't affect my neighborhood. I know the people in my ward don't want this, but it doesn't affect me." It does. Every part of Davenport affects every other part of Davenport. When you put in an Amazon building, or a Sterilite plant, or Kraft Heinz, it affects everybody, in my neighborhood, and in your neighborhood, and everybody's neighborhood. Downtown is important, but I think you need to listen to the people that put you here, that elected you, and you'll ask them to reelect you, and they don't want this. They really don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Dan Bush. First of all, I wanna say thank you, and I'm sorry. Thank you for listening to us over the last several months, and I'm sorry you've had to listen to us over the last several months. I know this has been a lot, and I know that nothing that you guys want more and what we, that we want more is for this conversation to finally wrap up in either direction. So at least we get that all tonight, so I think that's a reason to celebrate. I think what we have heard from the people who wanna keep one ways, one ways, is a lot of kind of anecdotal evidence. It's a lot of personal opinions. And what I like to do is take my personal opinion away from this as a downtown business owner, and mainly, let's get back to facts, let's get back to experts, and let's look at what they say. And what we found is that unanimously, the studies are showing that this is the right thing, not for right now, but for the future of this company, or of this, of this city. And, and I think the city should be looked at as a company. Downtown Davenport is the fastest-growing neighborhood, and we want to encourage that. If this were a company, you would want to invest funds into making sure that that grew as fast as it possibly could. This is gonna cause some amazing things, not just for downtown, but for the entire city. And I think the experts have showed that, and now I'm really excited to see how this turns out tonight. But the city is fantastic. I absolutely love being here, and I wanna thank each and every one of you for what you have done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
William Pamper, Seventh Ward, Davenport, property taxpayer and owner. You know, first rule of thumb, when you buy real estate or you run a property for business, is location, location, location. Apparently, all these companies seem a possibility in downtown Davenport, so they invested in, with the one ways as they were, as they are. All right? So now they wanna change it for the better? How do they know? They haven't been here long enough. They don't understand what it was like in 1956, when they changed the beginning with. I don't see any Davenport residents that were alive then down here saying, "Oh, yeah, we need to change them back to two-way streets." No, they're all for the one ways. I've talked to several of them that used to come downtown here prior to 1956. You know, you talk about safety. I get a real kick out of this, because most people can look at traffic and say, "Oh, yeah, well, they're, they're speeding." You know, I come down here, and I have a handheld radar gun, and I stood at the corner several different times, different days. And with my handheld radar gun, which is pretty dang accurate, I didn't see one speeder. Your speeders they're talking about are going up Brady Street. There is no stoplight from Fourth Street until you get to the top of the hill, if that one of these works, there's a dragway. You know, and on the way down here tonight, I looked. Hmm, interesting. Where are the one-way signs? Do you know where the one-way signs are? You'd expect them up there where the traffic lights at, where it says, "Hey, stop, go, slow down." No, they're down in the wrong place. They're next to the walk signs. You go right outside here, and you can see it, it's right there on Fourth Street. What do they have up there for, for drivers? Parking ramp directions. Come on. You wonder why people are turning the wrong way on one-way, safety? Wondering why, you know, people claim they're getting closely hit? I stood down there in the same corner. Interesting. For the twenty minutes I was there, I've seen three people on their cellphones driving down the street. Hmm, that's not an older generation, that's a younger generation, not paying attention to their driving. What does that have to do with one ways? Quite a bit. That's a safety factor. That's a safety factor. You put two-ways back in, they're going to be sitting here at the stoplight or coming up to a stoplight, guaranteed accident, rear-ending. You know, the money that you're going to spend changing this over could be distributed, as one person had said, throughout the entire Davenport community and not in one area. And as I said last week, they can self-fund, if they want the two-ways, they can self-fund it. Put your parking meters back in, which Davenport's been losing a lot of money since they haven't had, they took them out. Gee, downtown flourished. Wonder why? But put your parking meters back in and maintain them and enforce them 24 hours a day. Even expand it. I'm sure the renters up there would gladly help us pay for the conversion to two-way streets. See how long Davenport prospers after that?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one. Will an alderman please move the resolution?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion from anyone up here on the dais, alderman? Seeing none. Brian? Okay, if you're going to do it, then buzz in, okay? Alderman Jovian.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to kind of just get to the front here. I'm going to make a motion at the end of mine for an amendment, so I would actually ask my fellow colleagues if I would be able to go last. All right? Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. All right. First, I'd like to thank the hundreds of residents, business owners, city staff, and colleagues that have given me their time, advice, and wisdom on this matter. During this process, I have tried to listen, learn, and most importantly, get as many people as possible involved in the process, no matter if you was a no or a yes. I wanted to hear from you. To all the small business owners, I have tried to hear your concerns and try to understand how this change would positively affect your particular business, but have also been very mindful if this could hurt your business in any way. I could go into all the studies in favor and some against, but at the end of the day, I have to do what's best, I believe is the best for Davenport. As I have stated from the beginning, if this was detrimental to the Fourth Ward, I'd be voting no to this change. After hearing all sides and doing many hours of research, I have decided that a change is needed to our one-ways in downtown. I know to some, change is hard and unwelcome, and I believe change has to happen to take our downtown and the city of Davenport to the next level. I am not going to require, however, to go to Division Street to respect the taxpayers at this time. I am, said alderman, I've said from the very beginning of this process that I feel personally that Division Street will take care of the majority of the safety concerns that I have. I also felt that from Marquette Street to Division, that is one area on Third and Fourth that is crying out for economic development and safety. I truly believe a good leader and person who really and truly respects the residents and taxpayers has to be open to changing. My way or the highway is always, I feel, the wrong way to go. So out of respect for both sides, that is why, yes, at my ward meeting, hundreds of times before that, I said, "No, it had to go to Division Street." But that was for my reasons, what I thought was best, and that would, a yes, added more tax dollars to the citizens of Davenport with a price tag not fully understood. While this change isn't going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen next month, and it's not going to happen in a year, I figure it's another conversation for another time that the taxpayers can weigh in, and then we can decide what or at what point this one-way conversion should stop, at which intersection should be lighted or two-way stops. So yes, I am that alderman, and I've always tried to speak honestly and truthful to all the residents and city of the Fourth Ward and the city of Davenport. I am proud of all the positive I have done for the residents and businesses in my short time on the council, and I know a lot of work is left to do. So let's continue to work hard together, and you have my commitment to improving the Fourth Ward and city of Davenport as a whole. Thank you for your opportunity to speak, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't say a whole bunch up here. I listen a lot. I listen to my constituents, and I think that I'm going to have to vote with them tonight. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Anyone else before I go back to Alderman Jovian for his amendment? Alderman Lee.
Am I on? Okay. The basis for my vote that I'll be doing tonight on the Third and Fourth Street conversions, which will finally be made tonight, I'm very excited about that. Yes, I agree. From the very beginning of this effort, I've requested information on the problem we were attempting to solve with the conversion. Although the DDP conducted a survey for parking and deliveries, it didn't conduct a formal survey on which businesses actually had an interest in supporting the conversion. City staff said that they didn't have enough time to identify the need for action. All of this information, rather than anecdotal, we didn't have to know which businesses, but we had to know numbers and proportions. Would have been very helpful in understanding if such a conversion would have solved a particular problem or met a particular goal for the downtown businesses and those at and between Marquette and Division Streets. It is clear that a conversion will not solve the problem with downtown panhandling, harassment, and homelessness, nor speeding and reckless driving on River Drive and Harrison Street won't solve parking, deliveries, or even emergency response, regardless of where a terminus occurs. So I still, after all this time, do not know the specific need we're trying to address here. I mean, we can talk about other cities, but what are we trying to accomplish here? My second point. Alderman Gripp's comments about the cost of the Peoria conversion were correct. The $14 million that they're paying included engineering and constructing eight blocks with 13 intersections, but they used a complete-street approach to meet specific economic development and pedestrian-friendly objectives. Their design includes new signals, overhead lights, improved pedestrian access with ramps, sidewalks, and bumpouts, new streetlights at intersections and corner curb cuts. If we want a truly pedestrian and bike-friendly downtown, we need to use a complete-street design conversion for these types, including these types of modifications. And I'm really concerned that the design we've got now does not even have a bike path, especially with all the residential folks coming in. There's still no bike path involved in the design. Three. Lacking any safety analyses from staff, I previously detailed my concerns with safety, traffic safety at River Drive, Marquette, and Division Street intersections with Third and Fourth Streets. Feasibility does not mean these intersections would be safe. We have outdated traffic information from 2018 that was collected before the flood, the new residential developments, and even the new Y, even though new traffic numbers will be available in January, a mere four months away. Doing the best I could with these numbers and going, looking at the entire area and looking very closely at the intersections, the traffic volume on Division is substantially higher than that on Marquette, which also has its own high volume. We know the configuration problems with the intersection at River Drive, and we do not yet have any DOT decision on whether modification of traffic without reconfiguration of this intersection would even be allowed. Because traffic would be facing each other at the intersections at Marquette and Division, especially at Third, I believe that medians to specifically, to physically guide the traffic into the appropriate lanes with increased street lighting at the intersections would be required at a minimum to decrease the risk of accidents. We can't, I've said it over and over, I do not believe we can do it with paint. And we cannot do this conversion on the cheap. If we're going to do it, we have to do it right, including the complete-street approach. Yes, we have had a lot of public involvement, but I guess the question I want to ask is, are we listening? Are we listening to what people are saying? The Eighth Ward comments I've got, and many other ward constituents have expressed their opposition to the conversion, to myself, to the full council, and I'm assuming to other ward aldermen, requesting the money be spent on other priorities. Constituents in the West End and throughout Davenport have made their opposition clear by obtaining thousands of signatures on petitions. I am concerned, you know, and we've been listening here for six weeks. I'm concerned that maybe we're not truly listening. And what I'm hearing is not a lot of support from the citizens of Davenport. And to close, with no clear analysis of the need or objectives, no analysis of intersection safety by staff, my own concerns with under-design, high-traffic volumes, and opposing traffic, and therefore the potential for risk at three of the four proposed termini, as well as what I hear is overwhelming opposition from constituents, my vote is consistent, responsible, and well-reasoned, and I also agree that this is a moral issue. My vote will still be a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been having this discussion here for six weeks, overall for, in my case, almost a decade, so I won't rehash my arguments, but I did want to thank Alderman Ortiz for his leadership on this and for broadening the discussion. And I'm in agreement that we should keep it as proposed at Marquette. That keeps it at the budget that we have budgeted for it, and it's a bit of a compromise. So there's many folks in the downtown who are in favor of converting the one-ways to two-ways. There's many folks on the West End who are not in favor of it, right? And we had the opportunity to go all the way to Telegraph. In fact, I would favor that. I am for the elimination of one-way streets. We had the opportunity to take it to Division. We decided to do neither of those. The compromise is Marquette, so we don't take it quite as far. And it's interesting how history repeats itself. So in the early 1950s, when there was one-way streets and there was 32,000 cars a day on Third Street and Fourth Street, there were folks downtown who said, "We need one-way traffic," and there were folks on the West End who said, "No, we don't, we need two-way traffic." And the compromise in the 50s was Warren Street, which is not as far as Marquette. They took it to Warren Street, and they implemented it for a while, and when they proved the concept, then they extended it all the way down to Telegraph. Fast forward 70 years, now we have 6,000 to 8,000 cars a day on Third and Fourth Street, and we're saying, "We don't need freeways in our downtown. We need places where people can feel comfortable and feel safe." So I view it as a bit of a compromise for the folks who disagree. And so I appreciate the public participation, I appreciate the council dialogue, and after more than a decade of discussing this, I'm happy to put it up to a vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cornet.
I do live in downtown. I live on West Third Street. I don't know if particular, that was the concern that was being raised by some of the public that spoke, but I guess to clear any confusion or any, clear the air, I live on West Third Street. And if being a resident of a neighborhood affects, is considered a conflict of interest, then our ward alderman would be pretty ineffective. And if investing in your community and in your neighborhood is a conflict of interest, that would also make the council pretty ineffective. The Schmid tax assessment that I have no choice whether or not to pay into, it's levied against the entire geographic area. It existed before I lived there, and I hope it exists after I leave. Could have chosen to live anywhere I wanted to, but downtown wooed me, and that's what we want to happen. I have a very emotional connection with my neighborhood. It's a wonderful neighborhood. It continues to woo me, and I live there in spite of its challenges. And it's a wonderful neighborhood that deserves a voice, and I don't mind being that voice. The wonderful thing about downtown Davenport is all of its residents, all of downtown, I'm sorry, all of Davenport feels a connection to downtown. But as this neighborhood has come of age, it deserves to have its own voice and its own considerations. It's very important to me that this ordinance passes, but similar to some of the sentiments that my colleagues have offered, second only to getting it passes is how we get it done. And I want to thank staff for their patience in facilitating a very robust public process in which multiple public forums were held, a community survey was let out. It was a featured discussion of many of our ward aldermen's meetings, and after such discussion, no matter your stake or your interest in the downtown, you've had a chance to have your voice heard. So I'm proud of that public process, and I thank you again for all of your time and your patience as we debated this divisive issue, something that's proven to be divisive, but my respect for my colleagues has only grown. It has been a respectful debate, and it was one that included listening, seeking understanding, appreciation of each other's perspectives, and I hope some compromise. And again, I think those are all strengths. No disrespect to any of my colleagues, but the strength of us as councilmen is not our IQ, it's our perspective. And if having a very intimate perspective of the downtown would disqualify me from the discussion, I feel like that'd be an injustice. So I'm glad that we stand here together still as a strong council. We have so many other important opportunities for us as a city on our horizon, and I look forward to tackling those together with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, before I go to Alderman Jovian for his amendment, anyone else? Because once I go to him, we're not coming back. Alderman Jovian.
Thank you, and I apologize. I do have some comments prior to that as well. You know, I will take Mr. Bush's approach and apologize for a lot of my lengthy comments throughout this process. You know, since the Capitol Budget Meeting in January, I've been raising questions, mostly in opposition regarding this project. You know, I know my involvement has not been as long as some, but as the discussion comes to an end, I wanted to take this last opportunity to continue the discussion and know my amendment is not going to be to table this. I want to thank my colleagues, with which I have spoken since last Wednesday's committee of the whole. I had been really pondering various items regarding this ordinance change, but following those conversations, I am no longer indecisive. I am unequivocally opposed to the change in traffic pattern on Third and Fourth Streets as the ordinance is written, and will be voting no this evening. Throughout this process, a significant majority of the Six Ward residents that reached out to me regarding this proposal have been in opposition. I've also received many comments from those and acknowledged those that have reached out in support, and I thank people on both sides of the fence. Overall, I don't think conversion is the worst thing in the world, and there's a potential to do so correctly. However, as the ordinance is written, I do not feel approval is solid policy. Instead, I believe we are literally cutting corners, two acutely anchored ones at that. What is being done is a mashup of position statements by people who desire for there to be conversion to two-ways, a bucket of funds shared by a public-private partnership, and data from city staff which speaks of feasibility, yet not a ringing endorsement. Besides trying to best represent the voice of Six Ward residents, I've also shared my personal objections. I've also shared my personal objections to this specific plan. Those continue to be the River Drive intersections, the Western terminus, and four-way stop-controlled intersections downtown. Addressing the River Drive intersections, if I'd ask Brian to please just pull up this, we must remember that we still do not have DOT approval of the plan presented to this council. While staff has been quoted as there not being any showstoppers, I question as to why the DOT is still asking for extra data. Further, given the facts that people have known these intersections are non-conforming, and that two-way conversion has been the push for a lengthy period of time, I question as to why there hasn't already been a solution devised with concrete approval from the DOT. I was encouraged last week to hear that controlling the River Drive intersections with lights could improve safety as cars waiting to turn left on the Third and Fourth Street from River Drive would not be hanging out in traffic as much. However, I must point out, as shown on the screen, that the current plan presented to this council does not show a designated left-hand turn lane on River Drive. Therefore, drivers will still have to wait in the left lane of traffic while they yield to opposing traffic. Otherwise, the lights will have to be configured in a way so that southwest River Drive traffic is stopped to allow for a solid green left-turn arrow for those northeast-bound travelers. Now, no one will accuse me of being the most environmentally conscious member of this council, but I have to reason that if a plan calls for stopping traffic and having vehicles idle while they never did before, that is not the best policy for the environment. I contend the best plan is to use the money dedicated for this conversion to address these intersections with more robust engineering solutions. Moving on to the Western termini, I still contend that conversion needs to either eliminate or minimize two-way traffic coming head-on with one-way traffic. For those that have been following the process, we know there has been little to no interest to extend the conversion to Telegraph. I thought there was going to be a motion to amend this ordinance to extend the conversion to Division. But based on a conversation I had over the weekend, I learned that others on this council decided against that plan. I will not make any such motion to amend this ordinance because I know it will fly like a lead balloon. But I still contend ending the conversion at Division Street lessens the risk of accidents with two-way traffic going head-to-head with one-way traffic. Here's why I believe risk would be less. Brian, can you go to the East Davenport screen? All right. Apologize, can't blow this up to read it, so my comments will have to suffice. On the screen is a map with the traffic counts that were presented to us. Again, these are the 2018 traffic counts. Looking at Fourth Street moving west, you can see approximately a 30% decrease in traffic volume from what was provided just east of Gaines, which, I apologize, I've looked at it before. I think it's approximately 10,000 vehicles to the value provided just east of Marquette. From the counts, it appears as if much of the decrease is due to vehicles turning on Gaines to go across the Centennial Bridge. There also appears to be vehicles turning south on Brown, maybe they missed their turn. Now, Brian, if you wouldn't mind going to the West Davenport map. Interestingly, it does not appear by these, by this data as if traffic trails off much on Fourth Street as approaches Division. But again, we look at these numbers and it's based on values many blocks west. Now, looking at north-south traffic, the numbers of vehicles on Division is greater than Marquette, which I could reason as to why there should be, or there would be, the sentiment of ending the conversion at Marquette. However, based on the numbers, it appears as if approximately the same percentage of traffic turns off onto the east-west roadways. For example, there's approximately 25% decrease on Marquette, where there are 8,000 vehicles per day listed north of Fourth Street and 6,000 south of Third. Then on Division, there appears to be approximately 28% decrease as there are 10,000 vehicles north of Third. Then it goes down to approximately 7,200 south of Second. Further, the amount of vehicles east of Division Street is slightly less than the value listed west of Division. Then that block does continue to increase to the east. Still, the amount of vehicles near Marquette is approximately a 30% decrease, excuse me, is 30% increase as compared to Division. Simply put, I think any policy we develop should look to decrease the risk of accident or injury. And to me, the numbers show conversion ending at Division decreases the amount of vehicles where two-way traffic comes head-on with one-way traffic. Should the numbers that form my analysis not be accurate, then any claims to validity of studies or other analyses should be challenged. Even if one doesn't argue the safety impact as a reason to extend a division, then economic benefits proposed by conversion is another reason, as mentioned by my colleague to the right. You know, ask yourself, which area needs more help economically? I would imagine that many would point to the area west of the DDP boundary, which includes the area between Marquette and Division. The third inch, third issue I mentioned previously is intersection controlled by four-way stops. Intersections controlled by four-way lights provide pedestrians and drivers direction regarding their movements, which an intersection controlled by stop signs can't do. Therefore, in my opinion, lighted intersections are inherently more safe than those controlled by stop signs. Since I do feel strongly about the intersections being controlled by lights, I will make a motion for an amendment at the end of my comments. Besides these three reasons for my opposition, I still feel as if the downtown has a bit of an identity crisis, and we are trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, as well as conversion will not address the issue some are hoping it will. Many proponents of conversion cite a desire to make the downtown area more pedestrian-friendly, which I do not oppose. However, I still don't know how you make the area less auto-centric when the vast majority of people that are consumers of the downtown businesses will arrive by cars. Parking for people coming to eat, drink, and be merry while enjoying all the great restaurants and entertainment spots downtown will primarily be along Fourth, Third, and Second Streets. This includes getting to all the various ramps downtown. We don't have an abundance of parking along River Drive, and I agree with fellow council members that have mentioned that one of the worst uses of real estate along our riverfront is parking. So I don't encourage any more there. We need a system where an abundance of vehicles can move freely and eventually park to visit these businesses. There has been a suggestion that people Uber or use some form of ride-share to get downtown as a method of alleviating parking strain or decrease the amount of vehicles for those looking to enjoy the downtown amenities. However, I believe this only creates a convenience tax that will be a deterrent to most due to the extra costs, wait times, due to a dearth of actual ride-share drivers in this area. As a result, I think that strategy pretty much cuts off our nose despite our face. Further, people are trying to create a quiet neighborhood setting for those that choose to live in apartments above one of the city's thriving entertainment districts. Just here, as far as some of the establishments along the north side of Third Street, from Ripley all the way to Pershing, are the list of some of these businesses. We have the Call Building with the Capitol Theater, Max Tavern, Carriage House, Kill Kenny's Bar. We got Unimpaired Drive Bar, Central Grocery. We got Gold Goat Barbers, Empire QC. We have Allied Barber, Infinity Salon, What a Gym, Me and Billy. We got the old lot, open lot by the old bank. We got the Office, Boozy's, Antonella's Analog Arcade and Bar, Soy Three, Mississippi Lofts, Raw, The Adler, The River Center, and then the Black Hawk Hotel. To me, all of those scream nothing but hustle and bustle, not a slow, quiet neighborhood setting. For those that point to the safety risk of those turning the wrong way on a one-way, I would say that the risk of that behavior has not been eliminated with this plan. All that has been done is the risk is pushed farther west. Out of sight, out of mind does not result in good policy, in my opinion. For those that hope conversion will put an end to the nuisance created by the Vin Diesel Fast and Furious wannabes downtown, I don't think your prayers will be answered by conversion either. The true drag strip which contributes to this behavior includes the Brady and Harrison corridors. The downtown just happens to be a convenient spot for them to turn around and head north, or maybe just a destination for those wanting to hit up a bar during one of the weekend evenings. For the record, I asked staff about blocking off all but one lane along Third and Fourth Streets from Harrison to either Brady, Pershing, or Iowa, whichever we choose, to see if the methods used to deter some of the nuisance behaviors, which was pointed out last week, would be successful in our downtown. Alderman Dunn and myself have each inquired about...
The question's been called, and there's a second, so we vote on the call of the question, which stops debate. Okay? Brian, please call the roll for calling the question, meaning we will go to a vote. We're calling the, voting on the question right now. Meaning we're stopping debate. Then we'll go to vote on the amendment. If there's, I'll let the amendment count first. But we're done debating. We're done speaking forever. Alderman Condon.
Ortiz?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
Cornet?
No.
Lee?
No.
Dunn? McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Jobgin?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Looks like four, yeah, one, two, three, four yeses and six no's.
Right, so Alderman Jopkin, continue.
Apologize, I'm almost done anyway. Sorry. So where I was, Alderman Dunn and myself have each inquired about either a trial conversion or phasing the conversion should this ordinance pass, so the area from River Drive through Harrison are addressed first and not have to wait a few years until resurfacing from Telegraph to Harrison is completed. Speaking only for myself, I was thankful for the response from staff indicating the potential for a follow-up feedback session to allow council to provide further policy guidance. I look forward to discussing this further with any colleagues interested and taking action sooner rather than later. The very last point I'm going to make is a reiteration of something I mentioned last week, which is that Third and Fourth Streets are minor arterials which are designed to move traffic. They are not local roads which are designed to discourage major-through traffic. Therefore, I believe we should continue to allow traffic to flow. In conclusion, I thank staff, my fellow colleagues for entertaining my questions and comments throughout this process. I thank those in the audience that attempted to follow my ramblings. I thank Kyle Carter specifically for our conversations. And I always thank him and the DDP for their work to keep our downtown thriving. I am supportive of a thriving downtown, but do oppose this version of two-way conversion. I would be remiss if I didn't remind people that those two things are not mutually exclusive. With all that said, I'm throwing this out here to my colleagues. I apologize for springing this on you. I make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance to have the intersections of Third and Iowa, Third and Pershing, Fourth and Iowa, and Fourth and Pershing remain as signalized intersections.
Not hearing a second? Okay, well, the amendment does not pass or does not get action. Okay? Does not carry. Okay. Now, Brian, please call the roll on the original motion.
Lee?
No.
Cornet? Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Jobgin?
No.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Five yeses and five no's, Your Honor?
Yes, and I vote yes to break the tie. Okay, the next item. Number two is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation's Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program for assistance for the South Concord Avenue and Water Pollution Control Plant Compost Facility overpass and excess road progress. Is there any public with comment on this issue?
You know, I was at the STB hearing here in Davenport. Yes, I saw several of the city council people there, which I expected to. But not one person from the city spoke to the STB board concerning any type of safety, noise congestion, or traffic. I'm really disappointed in the city council for basically selling out to the railroad. You don't know what's coming down the road. You take and you file for this Department of Transportation for the no form and signal on your crossings. But have you been informed that when you do that and you vote for it, that you are responsible as a city for any incidents, deaths, that happen there? Anywhere across any of the crossings here in Davenport? Some of you may think, "Well, what's he talking about?" Well, being a railroad engineer for 24 years, I think I would know some of the legal statistics when it comes to that.
That's fair, so you're point of order, right?
It is, right, right there.
Okay, so we'll focus back on, yeah. So sir, just, I think I know where you're going, but as the good Alderman said, let's focus on Concord.
Same thing. You basically gave up everybody's right along South Concord Street, accessibility. By closing that one crossing, you're gonna end up with a dead end for a bridge that goes to the sewer plant and the compost.
I guess you're done. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Alderman, please move the resolution. Motion? Second? Any discussion from Alder folks? Dunn, I see your mic's on, or you want? No, okay, very good. Brian, please call the roll for this resolution.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Cornet? Jobgin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Dunn? Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, that resolution passes. The next one is a resolution authorizing the submission of a creative placemaking grant application to the Destination Iowa program through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the resolution? Motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Brian, please call the roll.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobgin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman? And Cornet? Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, the resolution passes. Okay, now, is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jobgin?
Yes.
And Cornet? Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Very good, consent's approved. Last, next item, is there other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public of business? Again, Dale, I know you know the rules. Name, order, address, love to know where you're from, if you're not from here. Five minutes, please.
Yeah, I've been to more meetings than anybody else.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name's Dale Gilmar, I live in the Sixth Ward. I just want to let you know what I did last weekend. Every, every, the last weekend in September in Springfield, Illinois, is our 66 Fest. It's a huge car show. And as all of you know, I'm a huge car guy. They have 80,000 spectators in 48 hours. They block off the streets of downtown. I mean, it's just, it's, it's about six blocks wide, about four blocks long, and you park your car. This gentleman probably knows, we stay at the Abe Lincoln. That's at Seventh and Adams, a block away from the Fifth and Sixth, but we won't get into that. But, you know, I would like to see something like that started. You know, it, we're not going to attract 80,000 people, but, you know, everybody talks about, "Bring the Bix here, bring the Bix here, you know, bring RagBri here." You get 80,000 people in 48 hours, and you talk about an economic driver to the community, that's it. This year was our eighth year going, and we haven't missed a year since our first year in 2014. So last weekend in September, if anybody wants to go, I'll give you a ride in a classic car down to Springfield. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Willie Shorter, and I've just come to let you guys know that for the last five years that I've been...
Sir, name, order, address, or wherever you want to go.
I don't have an address. Because the superficial is, when I came to you guys for help as if this guy had threatened three people in the building and he had eviction, and then he tried to assault me. I have audio, video of everything that's been going on. I got evicted from my apartment because I stood up for the right thing, because I was being called the N-word. I'm not understanding this. I've been standing in the garage since Christmas. I was out in the cold ever since Christmas. I put this on today because at night I changed clothes because I don't have nowhere to go. And before I let my kids and my grandkids see me with my head down, my tail between my legs, I would be a lifetime memory of the Iowa State Prison. I'm not letting this go. I want you to understand what you said in the paper, that the N-word was just a little name-calling. I'm never gonna let this go. You started this, man.
Mister, we're not gonna do individual discussion.
I know we're not gonna do this no more, man, because you started this.
You have the last warning.
No, you started this.
Last warning.
When y'all would not listen to you.
Please escort Mr. Shorter out.
Ain't nobody finna escort me up out of here.
You're done talking. All right, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We're adjourned.